Welcome back to our open agenda meeting for tonight, the 12th of November. What's that day? It's 11, 12, 13? Some must say people want to get married on that day. I don't understand it, but I guess things are easier to remember when you do that. I know that's important at my age, so it's probably not a bad idea. So glad you're here tonight. And our first, we met at 5:30, went to executive session, now we're back in public session. And our first is our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Please stay up. Tonight, we're going to have a moment of silence. Yesterday was Veterans Day. We have a lot to be thankful for. And let's just think about all those things that we do have to be thankful for.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is approval of our current agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Okay, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second. Motion, Ms. Anderson, second is Brill. Okay, this time I will vote on that. Motion. Vote's on the screen. Thank you very much. You passed unanimously. Next is our consent agenda, which includes approval of our consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from previous meeting, budget update, read minutes requests, and ratification of personnel. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the board chairman to execute an employment contract with Dr. Deborah Hamm as superintendent of Richland School District Two effective November 12th, 2013. Said contract having been prepared by the district attorneys and reviewed by all members of the Richland School District Two Board Trustees and providing for a term of employment through June 30th, 2015 at an annual salary of $199,000.
A second.
A second.
Okay, this time. Let's hear some discussion. Mr. Manning, I bet there is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I think Dr. Hamm's done an outstanding job of taking this district from where we were through some difficult times. A lot of people had questions about where we were going, what we were going to do. We knew that especially Common Core was such a big focus for our district. And I've really just seen her take the bull by the horns and drive us forward in that direction in a very short period of time. And in some ways, with not a lot of direction from us at the beginning because things were kind of churning a little bit there for a while. So very excited. Dr. Hamm has a long history with this district in a lot of ways. And I think that depth and breadth of knowledge that she brings will help us to move forward. So, Dr. Hamm, very excited to have this opportunity to take you from an interim role to the permanent role and look forward to the opportunity to work with you in that way.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Heather.
Yes, I would like to make a comment. At this time, I am not willing to support the appointment of Dr. Hamm. And I've written a statement to make sure that I share my thoughts with the public so you guys can understand why I'm making the decision that I've made. Dr. Hamm brings with us her longevity, continuity, and other essential skills which are indeed an asset to the district. I have and will continue to support Dr. Hamm. However, I am very disappointed in the process and I'm concerned that the board has moved hastily and chosen not to pursue a nationwide search. This process would have allowed us to formally interview Dr. Hamm and to interview other candidates. Therefore, if Dr. Hamm would have been the best candidate, she would still have been the best candidate once we opened up the search. And I think the public needs to be aware that we did not do a formal interview, we did not open up the search, and I'm just not pleased with that. So I state my case. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to state one thing. I was the person on the board who recommended Dr. Hamm for interim superintendent. And I know a lot of people in the public thinks that I am not going to support her. But I give you my full support, Dr. Hamm, and I will continue to support you. And I will continue to tell you those things that I think that we need to do in my vision and to move, continue to move this district forward. And I want that made as a public statement. I thank you because I know most people think that I'm not supporting her, and I am.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson.
Ms. Burrow?
And I wanted to say congratulations, Debbie, instead of Dr. Hamm. Look forward to working with you now and in the future. It's been a pleasure working with you and look forward to the great things, continuing things that we've done in the past, things we're going to be doing in the future. And it's just a real pleasure to call you our superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I too want to echo those comments made in support of Dr. Hamm in this position. I'm excited that she's willing to accept it for mere 18 months and then will give us the opportunity to do all the things that Ms. Elkins-Johnson suggested we do for a long-term superintendent. But in this interim period, I think it is absolutely critical that we have someone who had the knowledge, the experience of this district to be able to step in and immediately begin the process of the healing that was necessary. Dr. Hamm has done an excellent job of that. I think the consensus throughout the entire district reflects that, and I'm excited for the opportunity to take the interim off the front of her title. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My last comment is I appreciate the board's support. I believe that Dr. Hamm has done an outstanding job since she's been here. There are always bumps and humps, and I've been through a national surge. I'm not, I understand where Ms. Elkins-Johnson is coming from, but I've been there and quite, it's not always cracked up to be. There's some things you can do. I know there's history, not in our district, but in neighboring districts of this same thing happening. And I thank Dr. Hamm for taking this short-term contract. I consider it a short-term contract, okay? But she has got to hire principals coming up. She's got to have that type of support from the board and the district. And so being superintendent makes all the difference in the world when you're going out to talk to people about our district, when you're going out to hire people, when you're making decisions. And I want to thank the board. And at this point, I would like to have the vote on our consent agenda with the agenda.
Mr. Chair, before we vote, I just would like to say congratulations to Dr. Hamm as well.
Thank you, Ms. Spector.
You want to do my hand?
Yeah.
Okay, all those, yeah, all those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand. All those opposed, raise your right hand. Six to one. Thank you, Dr. Hamm.
May I make a brief statement?
This time I'll let you. This is the proper time.
Through the tears, thank you, everyone. It has been a real privilege to spend really almost my entire professional life in Richland School District Two. Every day, I know what a gift it is to come and work with an extraordinary group of colleagues. I want to thank the board for this opportunity. I'm very, very grateful, and it will be a privilege to serve as the superintendent. Thank you.
Very much. Okay, special recognitions at this time. Who's doing that? Fred? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, tonight we have students, teachers, and also a school to recognize. And as I call folks forward, I would like to tell you a little bit about each of our honorees. Blythewood Middle School has received the Whole Child Award from the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development. I would like to call Principal Dr. Brenda Hafner and her team to come forward to accept the award. And Dr. Hafner, please introduce your team after I finish. This award acknowledges those schools that have changed the conversation about education from a focus on narrowly-defined academic achievement to one that promotes the development of the whole child, a child who is healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. Congratulations, Blythewood Middle School. Next up, we have Margaret Roberson from Blythewood High School. We'd like to call her up along with her principal, Mr. Keith Price. Ms. Roberson was named the National Art Honor Society Sponsor of the Year by the South Carolina Art Education Association. In her third year at Blythewood, she has grown the Blythewood High School chapter of NAHS to its largest numbers and its largest involvement with community in the arts. If you recall, we honored Mr. Price last month for receiving the Outstanding Principal Award from the same organization. And now we'd like to honor our students and faculty. He won blue ribbons at the South Carolina State Fair. First, I'd like to call Lauren Peak from Bethel Hanbury Elementary School. She will be accompanied by her art teacher, Elise Peak, who also happens to be her mother, and Principal Jeff Williams. She won a blue ribbon for second-grade artists. If you look over at the recognition slides, you'll get a look at their award-winning work. Congratulations, Lauren. Next, we have Hannah Mason from Spring Valley High School. She will be accompanied by her principal, Dr. Baron Davis. Hannah won first place for 12th grade photography. I would also like to call up Nadia Egypcioko from Westwood High School, who will be accompanied by Principal Ralph Schmidt. Nadia won first place for 11th grade 2D artwork.
Are we kissing?
Nadia.
Great job, Ralph. Ridgeview High School has several winners. We'll take a group picture of them after they've all been recognized. First, let me call up art teacher Chris Nostrent, who won the highest award, the Best of Show in the Professional Fine Arts category. Principal Brenda Mack will join him.
Hold up, his principal's coming. Hold up a second. Hold.
Mr. Nostrent, Ms. Mack, please stay up there for just a moment as I call up one of Mr. Nostrent's students, Lilia Ferris. Lilia won a blue ribbon for the category of 10th grade two-dimensional work. Another Ridgeview student, Allison Bickham, also won a blue ribbon for 9th grade 2D work, but she was unable to attend tonight. If you'd all stay up for just one more moment, I'd like to ask Ridgeview art teacher Catherine Perry to come forward. She won first place in the Professional Fine Arts category. And at the risk of setting the trend, Ms. Perry also has a blue ribbon student. Like to call up Anthony Jenkins. He won first place for 11th grade photography. Is Anthony here tonight? Couldn't make it. All right, if we have a group picture, we're done. Another round of applause for our award winners who are honored tonight.
Right. Faculty focus is our next. Dr. Hamm, who will be doing that?
Ms. Mallett will be leading that.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. As you know, our implementation team has been working very hard since spring of 2013. And you have a brief description of what they have accomplished so far. And tonight, we're privileged to have one of those teams, Spring Valley, led by Dr. Baron Davis, and two of his teachers, who are going to come forward and share some of the insights and learning that they have received.
First, let me start off by saying good evening to the board. And it's also just a privilege to have an opportunity to present to you and share with you briefly some things that we've done in our attempts to implement Common Core at Spring Valley High School as well as within the district. We're all aware the implementation of Common Core state standards will require an educational shift and change in pedagogical practices. Our students will no longer be assessed on surface and procedural knowledge, but more on depth and conceptual knowledge. And in order to make this shift successfully, we have to provide ongoing professional development to those individuals who'll be on the front line of this educational transformation. So we believe that the primary focus of the professional development should take place with the classroom teacher. And the classroom teacher must be at the center and serve as a foundation during this transition. This will require the building of capacity among our teachers and teacher leaders within our schools. To do this, all school-based Common Core implementation teams will require to have both school administrators and classroom teachers as members. Each team has and will continue to take part in ongoing professional development provided by the district. Teams are responsible for going back to their respective schools and providing professional development for their faculties and staff. So our first task in this planning of this event was to decide, we decided to have a three-focused round robin groups at Spring Valley. Our rationale for the round robins was that the smaller groups of teachers would promote larger ideas that are practical versus the large whole-group faculty approach where ideas and collaboration may be limited. In our planning, we assigned to implementation team members, Mr. Owens and Ms. Roberson, along with our ITS specialists, the task of planning three sessions. We had a session that focused on formative assessments and instructional feedback that was led by Ms. Roberson, the eighth mathematical practices that was led by Mr. Owens, and voice thread and close reading that was led by Catherine Robertson, our ITS specialist. They planned collaboratively with other teachers outside of their content areas. So this was something that was not simply done within mathematics, but we brought in teachers from outside of those contents so they could plan collaboratively and get different viewpoints. The implementation team members, along with their selected peers, planned the logistics out over two to three weeks during our Pep Wednesday, our Wednesday morning pep sessions in preparation for leading the October 17th professional development. On November 4th, at our district implementation team meeting, our data confirmed that the success of each session with the comments and blogs and testimonies from our teachers stating and attesting to the fact that our PD and planning stages were well worth it and it was possible and probably the best in-service that they've had in a very long time. So tonight, we have our implementation team members here, two of them, that is, and the members will share their experience in leading the Spring Valley faculty to the Common Core shifts for instruction in all classrooms.
Good evening, Dr. Hamm, board members, and other stakeholders of the district. My name is Felicia Roberson again, and I was heading up the formal assessment content of this October 17th formative assessment. And like Dr. Davis said, we had to plan together. That was really exciting for me because we're always teaching in isolation. And one of the things, as an educator, I love picking brains of other educators. So this, the logistics of getting us all together, it was two English teachers, this myself and another teacher, and two social studies teachers. And we all, our conversation was all about, what are we going to do? How are we going to make this for teachers? You know, what are you doing? What are we doing? How can we put this together? So it was really fun to get with them and plan our presentation. The involvement, again, was the social studies and the English department because we, in conversation, we found out that we teach a lot of things, but we, like I said, we teach it in isolation. And for us to have these conversations and to move successfully in the shift that Common Core wants us to move, we start, we got to start having these conversations. The common goal, again, is to take what we do, our content, put it together, and use each other's talents into, you know, bringing us into this shift. The day of October 17th was fun for us. We started off with, we had to make sure that we had a mixed table of different disciplines because a lot of times when teachers come together, we all sit with our own departments, with our friends, and we strategically set it up to where there would be social studies, arts, math, science, all at the same table that would kind of force them to come together and bring their different ideas. We had an icebreaker, which was about feedback because that's what formative assessment is. That was fun as well. The information was a PowerPoint about formative assessment. This is something we all do, but again, going into Common Core, we had to be reminded of why it's important. And we ended it with a cross-curricular activity. We used the text of "The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks." The gist of the presentation, real quickly, formative assessment, we talked about Dylan Williams. If you've done any research on Dylan Williams, he is the guru of formative assessment. And we showed a clip of him talking about why formative assessment is important. And I had to remind the teachers, this is not my presentation, this is not our presentation, this is all of us. And we are all doing formative assessment, and we had to be reminded of how important it is that we assess the learning. It's not so much about the teaching, it is about the learning that we have to put in the forefront. What are our students doing? What is it looking like? We also talked about, I kind of broke it up in an old-school and new-school. We're moving into the technology. We still have people who like to do whiteboards and question and observations, but then we have a lot of teachers who are moving into the Google Forms and voice thread and things like that. So it was fun to have everybody in there because everybody had a different aspect of what they could bring as far as technology is concerned. And it was very good, everybody could voice, you know, what are we doing in the classrooms? We ended the presentation with, and it was a two-hour session, we ended a two-hour session with a close reading and cross-curricular activity using a single text, "The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks." And out of that conversation was something that was born, I don't know if any of you have read the book, but an idea was really birthed that day through the faculty. We are excited about coming together and making this shift and teaching in a different way. We were able to, as each table was able to look at this single text, bring his or her own discipline into it. And there was a lot of conversation, a lot of excitement about how an art teacher can get with the English teacher, how the science teacher can get with the social studies teacher. And so it was a great day, and I will turn it over to Mr. Owens.
Greetings, Amanda Owens, math teacher at Spring Valley High School and instructional leader of the Mathematics Department, Spring Valley. As you know, the mathematics for the Common Core nationwide is going to take on a new look with the eight mathematical practices that teachers and students should be implementing and articulating and practicing in the classroom. And these are the eight pillars of math instruction that is going to require a shift from teachers' and students' standpoints, making sense of problems and persevering and solving them, reasoning abstractly, having our kids to create viable arguments, and modeling mathematics, using technologies and tools strategically, making use of structures and algebras and different types of mathematics, and attentive precision. So what we did at Spring Valley, we wanted to look at the mathematical practices universally. And we have held district implementation meetings, and I actually led one, and I came back with the idea to Spring Valley of how can we implement the eight mathematical practices in all classrooms? And I remember Ms. Mallett at the last meeting showing the snapshot of the eight mathematical practices. So in my session, I wanted to make the mathematical practices appeal to the senses. Now, of course, we can't taste the mathematical practices nor smell them, so I decided I would look at the three. So what I did was did a sounds activity with the teachers, and I went into five random classrooms that were not math classrooms, and I did a recording of the teachers and students talk and accountable talk and discourse. And the teachers actually heard the mathematical practices in other disciplines. So we at Spring Valley feel that this is something we are already doing, we're just not as cognizant of the framework. So I then led into a touching or tactile activity with the jigsaw puzzle where teachers actually matched up questions with the particular practices. And that was fun for the teachers. And also, we saw a video segment of a Common Core lesson from an Indiana classroom that is already live. So the outcomes, Spring Valley now recognizes that the mathematical practices are universal. These are not tools and practices just restricted to the math classroom. We are working on a document right now at Spring Valley where all departments can contribute to how the eight practices apply to their content areas. And we are very proud to know that our teachers know that this does require a professional shift. And we are also looking at implementing and posting in the classroom posters of the eight mathematical practices. And we are excited with the English department, who diligently is working on a document to create their own eight English practices for the Viking Common Core. So we are excited that the district implementation Common Core teams have dwindled down into the high school of Spring Valley, and those initiatives that were at the district level are at Spring Valley. To conclude this presentation, we would like to show you a video of some of the segments recorded during the day of October 17th, and we hope that you enjoy the short presentation.
Are you ready for questions?
I was just gonna say, are there any questions?
Okay, board members, any questions for, uh, Dr. Davis or his staff?
Mr. Chairman, I saw a lot of charts and a lot of writing, obviously couldn't read what was on them. Would you tell me sort of briefly, were you discussing teaching strategies, developing assessment rubrics? What exactly were you having the teachers work on that ended up being on a chart and being posted throughout the room on that day? What kinds of things, just briefly?
The eight mathematical practices, we, I assembled eight different groups, and the teachers across all disciplines, about five per table, were all at a table, and each table was responsible for a particular mathematical practice. So the teachers basically had to read the Common Core document from the Common Core website and see how those particular practices or that particular practice applies to their classroom. So the more varieties at the table, the more varieties of the strategies posted on the particular chart papers.
And so the, uh, follow-up from that in terms of taking what they did and being able to apply it in the classroom, h- how and when is that gonna happen?
It's already happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this was a reinforcement of that then?
This is a reinforcement for the math teachers, I know, in the math department, but it's also something kind of new to the science teachers, um, and other disciplines where mathematics is clearly linked to the particular content area.
Thank you.
One of the things that we're trying to, one of the things that we're attempting is first, we have to get a, a good working knowledge of what the Common Core standards are asking. And so by having the conversations across curriculum, teachers get the chance to see that these standards not just, are not just in mathematics or just in ELA, but they trans, they're, they're transferable across all, uh, content areas, including our K classes. If you, even in those presentations, we had several of our K teachers participating and talking about how these standards are relatable in their classes. So once we're able to have a good working understanding as a school, then we can start developing assessments, and then measuring those assessments and asking the question, thus is assessment measure what the Common Core state standard is asking that we measure. But before we can get to the point of being able to write assessments or even identify appropriate assessments, we have to have a really good understanding or working knowledge of what the standard is asking of us. That conversation that you see, that you saw taking place in mathematics and also in our English, uh, and in, even in the technology sessions, well, is the beginning of, of that process, so.
I thought though, that this past summer, we, or even maybe last summer, I thought we'd already developed, um, sort of, uh, the, the assessment piece, that at least we were considering using it, uh, as a part of, um, uh, the map testing. I thought so, I thought we had part of that already placed. Am I incorrect? You said before you can begin that you have to do, I thought we had already developed some of that.
So I think some of that has been developed, but when we're talking about authentic assessments in the classroom, teachers need to have the ability to be able to generate and, and, uh, select authentic assessments and not standardized assessments like you would see on map testing. You know, they have to be able to give quizzes and be able to give tests, um, from the content that they are delivering, so they have to have an understanding of what that standard is asking so that they can write and collaborate amongst each other. For example, in, say, Algebra One Part Two, what is an authentic Algebra One Part Two type assessment that is similar to common, uh, similar to a standardized, uh, question? Because there may not be a test bank that, that, uh, that will be able to provide us with those types of questions. So they need to be able to have the capacity to be able to, to do that collaboratively within our building.
And will the assessment begin next year since the real one begins in 2016?
Well, we already started the process of generating assessments. Yes, sir, the, the authentic assessments. That's what this conversation is about. So as we start to develop our own assessment-type questions, we can then, in our professional early planning sessions, sit down and look at these questions and ask, okay, we've, we asked the same question in all of the Algebra One classes. What do we see as a result of this type of question? One, is it a good question? Two, how did our students perform on this? And three, what do we need to do next to make sure that our students are, are able to, uh, answer these questions, uh, with the depth that's required for Common Core?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a, a comment and a question. Uh, one, I applaud you, I think formative assessment, and I think many of the folks on the board can speak to the fact that I've been asking about more formative assessment within our district and how we use it. Do we know our teachers are giving good tests and that we're truly, uh, measuring? Or are students going in a way that the data is, is usable? And so I applaud you guys for doing that. I hope that all of our schools are making this for a... But to back up Mr. Jackson's, uh, statement about map testing, I do seem to remember that we said that there were some formative assessments that, uh, Common Core-based formative assessments that we could use to gauge where we were with the Common Core. And so I, um, I, Mr. Jackson, I think that may be what you were asking.
That's correct.
And I would like to know, when do we start seeing those and when do we start seeing those results? And that may not be, I don't, that may, I mean, well, with, with high school, MAP is gonna be limited because we're not gonna really have map testing at the high school level for the exception of ninth grade, possibly. So we're, we're gonna have to develop assessments, um, for our, you know, our kids are taking econ and government, and there's, there are no assessments that are, uh, standardized that's gonna do that for us. So we, that, that's why we're not necessarily, we're not having abandoned those assessments, but the majority of the courses taught at the high school level, um, you know, we, we would have to be able to develop those assessments for ourselves, or, or find appropriate, uh, standardized questions that are Common Core-like, uh, questions. Yeah, I want to hear from Mr. Park, because I think he's one who's mentioned some of the, uh, the, the testing.
Uh, well, I, I think Mr. Davis or Dr. Davis is absolutely correct. I think we need to be building more capacity at the teacher level within the classroom to be able to assess what is an appropriate, uh, question, what are appropriate items that we should be assessing. And we, we are testing Common Core MAP assessment, and we've been working with it this fall. Um, so, uh, we have a new platform, we have Common Course, uh, assessments through NWEA that we are using in grades two through eight. I, I know some of our high schools are using it, uh, in a, in a, in a small level, uh, within their ninth-grade class. But I think what they're doing within their, um, within their, uh, professional development is things that need to happen, uh, district-wide, regardless of the grade level, regardless of the content level as well.
Right, I, I don't think anybody's disagreeing with that. I think it's the first time that I heard that the MAP for, the Common Core assessments within MAP weren't for high school level, so I think that's the first time I've heard that. And then the other, uh, other piece of that is, I know that we said we were gonna use that to sort of be a measuring stick, so certainly nobody's disagreeing classroom level, uh, everybody should be doing more formative assessment. We agree with that, but when do we start seeing some of the, uh, the MAP results come back so that we as a, a board or the district or whoever is using that data knows from a measuring stick where we are?
Teachers have that data already, at least from this fall. The growth data won't be available until, uh, really the end of this, the school year, after the spring.
So when students took the MAP testing this year, they took a form of, uh, a Common Core-based MAP assessment as opposed to the standard MAP assessment?
But yes, we used to test on the, uh, South Carolina State Standard version of the MAP assessment, and now our students are, are testing on the Common Core version of the MAP assessment.
And who will be going back to the schools, helping the teachers interpret that data and making a determination of how, uh, and what kind of impact the new teacher child is having on the results? Who's doing that, Jen?
I, I am, uh, Dr. John Arnold and, uh, Ms. Corey Jimenez. So the three of us are, are going out and having those conversations already, uh, and have been having those conversations, uh, for quite some time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr., Dr. Davis, your staff, appreciate y'all giving us a report, okay? Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, first time, uh, first public participation. I did have two people sign up, and I asked that, uh, just like I do every, it's gonna be a three-minute, just like the instructions I give every time, three-minute presentation, please. Uh, keep professional, um, opinions are welcome, but no personal attacks are, so let's, uh, at this point, I would, um, call the first person, which is Mrs. Kelly Carter.
Good evening, Dr. Hound and board members. First of all, I would like to thank you for hearing me out this evening. Um, I come to you this evening, my name is Kelly Carter, I'm sorry, again. Um, I come to you this evening, um, not in the spirit of pointing the finger or necessarily placing blame, but with a situation that I feel, um, could have been possibly devastating not only to our district but to our community. Um, last month, there was a situation where there was a young middle school student, female seventh grader, who thought she smelled marijuana on the school bus. She reported this to her mother or parent, and the parent then exchanged, called the school, and reported it to the school for it to be investigated. Um, at that time, the parent didn't have any idea, you know, if this was the case, if that is exactly, um, what the child smelled, but thought that it was warranted an investigation. Um, the staff or the administration did begin investigating it, and called the student into the office and asked the student to go on the bus and to whisper to the bus driver what student that she thought, um, had the marijuana, and to give a descrip, description of what the student had on. The young man that the student described that was reporting the issue then was pulled off the bus and searched, and nothing was found, and he was put back on the bus. But, um, the student that was reporting it was seen by another student on the bus, if this makes any sense. Um, hopefully it does. Um, talking to the bus driver. And so she was then exchanged, um, singled out and was verbally abused for the entire bus ride home, um, called, you know, all kinds of names, the B-word, a snitch. Um, and then once she arrived at her bus stop where she was supposed to get off, not only did children who got off the bus at her stop with her got off, but over ten children, some of them eighth-grade boys with this seventh-grade female, continuously threatening her, um, to the point when she arrived to her building, she was attacked, she was actually punched in the side of the face by one of the eighth graders. Um, this was on the week of the fair when the situation happened, and, um, school was closed on that Thursday and that Friday. The parents then exchanged, uh, then went to the school on that Monday morning to speak with the principal about the situation and was told that, um, they needed to make an appointment. They did see the assistant administrator, um, but they felt at that time that they wanted to see the principal, um, because it was the assistant administrator that had the lapse in judgment to begin with to tell the child to go on the bus and to, um, whisper in the bus driver's ear. Um, now, my question at this point is, um, more, um, what I want from you all or what I want to be made aware of, and I'm sure there are other concerned parents, um, that I've spoken with and some that I haven't that would feel the same way.
You got thirty seconds.
Okay, um, in, in this time where, you know, unfortunately, we have children who are going into schools and who are opening fire and who are, um, attacking, in, in Georgia, where the young boy was found beaten to death, and in Florida, where the young girl committed suicide because of bullying, what actions are we taking here in District Two? What policies are we revisiting? Um, I'm sure, or at least I hope there are policies already in place, but in this time period when we're dealing with such a different kind of child and different kind of student, I as a parent, and I'm in representation of my family, would like to know, um, what are we doing? How could this situation have been handled differently where this child could feel comfortable to report wrongdoing without being singled out and then labeled as a snitch where she could be bullied for the remainder of the year? These are the questions that I'm asking you as the board and would like to be, you know, to discuss at a later time. Because of the time restraints, I have, um, um, revised or written a letter in detail which you will all receive tomorrow in your inboxes. Um, so, um, tonight, I would just like to make the situation, the public aware of the situation, and would like to ask you, um, to think about what kind of citizens are we raising here in District Two? Are we raising the type of citizens that are afraid to speak out for what's wrong? Afraid to tell the police or even our students afraid to tell administrators because they don't want to be singled out? Um, that is the question that I have for you tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Carter. It's a life, a lifelong question. I mean, it's, like, thank you. And we will, uh, we will, we will take your comments definitely into consideration and talk about. Vivian Brackett.
Good evening, Chairman of the Board and members of the Board. I'm here tonight to address you as a taxpayer, as the grandparent of four children, and as an educator who is concerned for all of the children in Richland School District Two. I've heard some good things tonight, and I'm sure that you are doing good things in the district. But I do have some concerns about results. What are the results? I have looked, and I've reviewed the state test, and Richland Two is not doing well. You're not doing well at all. Of your elementary schools, five received an excellent rating, eight a good rating, five an average rating, three a below-average rating. Your middle schools, zero received an excellent rating, one received a good rating with a below-average growth rating, six received an average rating. And for all of the schools, for the growth ratings, many of them are in jeopardy of falling below where they are. If your children came home with a pack of seeds, I call it, you would be grounded for a year or more. I know I would ground my child. And this is what your district scores look like. Average just won't do. I moved to this district because it has, or always has had, a good academic track record. And as I talked to the oversight committee member this morning, I was told that the district student performance has been dropping since 2009, and it has not recovered. The questions that I was told to ask of you, why aren't you doing better than Darlington next door? They have fewer resources, and they have a higher poverty rate. Why aren't we doing better than Lexington School District One, who has a 51% poverty rate? It, these kinds of scores just won't do. When we have so many, and I'm just naming a few, but when we have so many, if you go on and you look at the data, there are so many districts that are doing much better than we are doing when we have all of these resources that these districts do not have. We should be better off than we are academically. When I looked at, just to name a few schools, Blythwood Middle School had an excellent rating. It hasn't dropped.
I want you, you got about thirty seconds.
Okay, but my question to you tonight is, where and what kind of policies are you revisiting, whether they be curriculum and instruction or whatever they are, but what are you revisiting to pull the district up and beyond where it is? Thank you.
Check your comments, Ms. Brackett. Is there anyone else at this point would like to address the board? Would you like to address the board? Okay, come state your name, please. I don't think I have a sheet for you.
Good evening, I'm Latrell Bronson. How are you all doing this evening? I stand before you tonight with remarks, reports, articles, comments that has been made and has been publicized in the media about Ms. Anderson, the treatment of her family. Looking over the reports and the concerns about this was concerns of a family and their loved one. It stimulated memories for me. Unfair treatment of my family member as well as parents have received concerning Coach Summers. When I saw the... When I saw the article in the newspaper...
Sorry, we're not talking about personnel today. If you want to do that, you're allowed to sit down. Can't talk about, I'm not talking about personnel, specific, can't talk about that.
We can't talk about that?
No, ma'am. We're not talking about a specific employee in our district.
Okay. But what if we're not talking about unfair treatment to students?
I said, any of your opinions are fine.
Okay. I've been a part of this district for twenty-five years. I had three children to graduate from Richland School District Two. I have a twenty-five-year-old daughter that received unfair treatment in this district, and it brought back memories. And we're not talking about staff members, but I think that things that's overlooked really needs to be looked at because it's behavior pattern. And if it happened twenty-plus years ago and is still happening today, I think as a board, we need to look at what's going on in our schools and what's being not said with our children. And when a child brings home something to a parent, a concern of unfair treatment in the school by an adult, which we teach our children to respect who has ruling authority over them. And when that is not being done, that's unfair treatment. And I would like for the board to actually look at some of the concerns of our children because we're here for our children. And our main concern, when we lose focus of our children, then we lose focus of why we're here. And that's maybe some of the problems that we're having, failing in our districts and some other problems. Maybe it's not the children learning, but it's in situations that the children are being put in. Thank you for your comments.
If you want to do that, you can email us specifics through email. I just, we're not up here.
I will do that, thank you.
Others this time? Seeing none, let's move on to vote on executive session items. Student appeals. Do I hear a motion on stu... By the way, we have twenty-five tonight, so just hold, hold down and, you know, we're gonna go through them as quickly as we can. Jill, are you ready? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, for student number one, recommend Blythewood Academy. Number two, deny, goes to the IEP team. Two. Number three, Blythewood Academy. Number four, Blythewood Academy. Number five, Blythewood Academy. Number six and seven, uphold the appeal and send those students to Lurideck. Number eight, Blythewood Academy. Number nine, Blythewood Academy with Lurideck and on strict probation.
When they return to their school, right?
Mm-hmm. Number nine, Blythewood Academy, Lurideck, and then return to the school on strict probation. Number nine. Number nine is Blythewood Academy and Lurideck. She already got that. And number ten is Blythewood Academy for the remainder of the school year and recommend Lurideck. Number ten, excuse me, number eleven, Blythewood Academy. Twelve, Blythewood Academy. Thirteen, Blythewood Academy. Number fourteen, Blythewood Academy. Number fif... Was number fifteen denied? IEP team. Fourteen was, excuse me, denied. Fourteen was denied.
And Ms. Brill, what was number twelve?
Number fourteen.
I know you had number fourteen, but what'd you say for number twelve?
Number twelve was Blythewood Academy. So you've got fifteen already, Anna Bo... Pardon me? Fifteen would be Anna Boyd. Anna Boyd in the IEP team, number fifteen. All right, number sixteen is Blythewood Academy. Seventeen, deny. Eighteen, deny. And nineteen is uphold and back to their school on strict probation.
I will switch your number. Okay.
Twenty, Blythewood Academy. Twenty-one, Anna Boyd. Twenty-two, Blythewood Academy. Twenty-three, deny. Twenty-four, Blythewood Academy, remainder of the school year. Twenty-five, Adult Ed.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remove number eight from that and vote on it separately. Or do I have to do that?
Number eight. This is the issue that we... Number, we, we... Ms. Brill has the... We'll pull out, we'll pull out eight. Yeah, just pull out, we'll vote, we'll have another motion. Okay, we have twenty-four student motions here, as you see on the screen and on your pull-out eight. So let's go ahead and vote on the twenty-four students we've had before us. Seven and zero, you're passing now, so okay, we hear a motion, student number eight.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that student number eight go to Blythewood Academy.
Second.
Second, now, Mr. Manning. Okay, the votes, the motion's in front of you, vote this time. Okay, we have five yays, one nay, and one abstention. So the motion passes. Okay, that concludes that part. I believe there's no other votable items tonight on executive session. So we're going to old business, action requested. Item ten-one, student assignment plan for Elementary School Nineteen in Lake Carolina Elementary School. Do I hear a motion?
Chair, I make...
Let us, Ms. Brill.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move, that we adopt the K-two, three-five model for student assignment that has been presented and discussed at a recent board meetings. With this great configuration change, Lake Carolina will become a K-twelve, excuse me, a K-two school, and an Elementary Nineteen will become a three-five school. These two schools will serve the current Lake Carolina Elementary attendance area as well as the Ashland subdivision, which will be reassigned from Round Top Elementary.
You have a second.
Second.
That's pretty close. James, Mr. Manning. Okay, this time, do I hear any discussion or any questions about this? Motion here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've looked long and hard at what our options are here, and I see this by far is the better option to any rezoning that might happen in Lake Carolina. I think the strength of Lake Carolina's a community, we should try to maintain that as much as we can. I think that we need to add new quivers to our, or new areas to our quivers, I say, and tools when it comes to the rezoning process and modernize the way that we go about this. So I applaud the district, I have complete faith in both of the instructional leaders over Lake Carolina with Dr. Berry and Mr. Williams, Elementary Nineteen. And I know that they will do a fantastic job and that the parents will really make this work in that community. So I applaud this opportunity for K-through-two and three-through-five.
Okay, other comments on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support the K-two, three-five, reasoning being, as I did my research, and look, there is no accountability for the K-one-two because there's no standardized testing. And as I shared with Dr. Hamm before, if she could present me with something where we can see what testing is going to take place with kindergarten first and second. So we'll make sure that our students are prepared when they go over to a three-through-five school with testing. We don't want those teachers teaching three-through-five not to have the reassurance that the kids are getting what they need in K-one-two. And also, I'm just a little concerned that if we go that route, K-two, three-five, all we're doing is publicizing a private school in a public school setting. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I am excited about the opportunity to have two schools that are in such close proximity be able to work collaboratively together and to be able to expand the type of diversity and learning that we have in this district. This district has been known for being a leader in magnet schools and single-gender education and many of the other areas that have demonstrated our success. And this is another example of an opportunity that we now have to be able to do that in a very unique situation. I think the fact that we've selected two principals who have an excellent reputation in their own individual schools to head up these two schools and have demonstrated their competence as instructional leaders can only enhance what's gonna happen once they start working collaboratively together less than two blocks apart. So I'm excited that we made a decision to provide an opportunity that will address the quality of education in that area that's continuing to grow. As I said to someone the other day, we had a similar conversation about the method in which we are developing schools in certain locations, and I indicated to them, as long as builders and contractors and developers are building homes and houses and bringing children in, it gives us very little control about where we have to place schools because we place schools where families are. And so I challenge us to continue to do the right thing as we see developers continue to develop. And once they stop developing, then maybe we can stop building schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for the vote. Okay. Five to two, motion passes. Okay. Next on our, is item eleven, which is our, item eleven-one, which is updated, our updated data snapshot of Dr. Hamm. Who will you do that?
Mr. Poss will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hamm. In your board packet tonight, you're gonna find information about the five-year data snapshot. This is information that you normally get on a quarterly basis. Tonight, you've given a larger report, an abstract, to share with you some of the details within this report. Quickly, I'd like to just share that, you know, this gives us an opportunity to see change that has occurred within the district since the 2007, 2008 school year. You don't have to look far to see some of the changes that exist within the district. The district's grown by more than thirteen percent since the 2007, 2008 school year. It makes Richland Two the fifth-largest school district in the state of South Carolina. Other changes that we've seen is we've also seen in that time period, a forty percent increase in the percent of students on free lunch within the district. That's nearly three thousand students. To combat that, Dr. Hamm this fall has asked or invited staff to participate in the district's Poverty and Diversity Awareness Series. Some of the great things that we've done in the district over the five, over these five years is despite a nineteen percent decrease in the base student fund cost, we've given all of our students in grades three through twelve a computer, something that they can work on within the classroom. And also in that time period, we've taken a district that was rated as an average district to an excellent, excellent district. This is a short summary of some of the information that you have within the packet. Do you guys have any questions regarding the information?
Okay, good. Mr. Poss is up to answer questions here today, and I'm sure he's gonna be backed up if he needs it, right? So, any questions for Mr. Poss at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we defer to the next meeting, at least for me, since I haven't had a chance to look through it because I'm sure I will have some questions, but I want to look over it first. So if you'll make sure we have an opportunity to ask those questions at our next board meeting, I would appreciate that.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is our report, and there's no action requested for our calendar for our next school year, fourteen, fifteen. Who's doing that for him? You are.
I'll take that.
Daniel.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming, members of the board. As we have with previous creation of calendars, we incorporated volunteers from our superintendent's faculty advisory council, staff, administrators, and principals in the creation of next year's proposed calendars through a calendar design team. Once this team was formed, several groups created calendars that were vetted through the faculty advisory council, and from that meeting, several calendars were then taken to our faculty and staff members to vote in favor of their preferred option. Tonight, in presenting the, joining me in presenting the recommended 2014, 2015 calendars is Terry Butts, a teacher at Bridge Creek Elementary School, former district teacher of the year, and a current member of the superintendent's faculty advisory council. Thank you, Ms. Butts.
Good evening, Dr. Fleming, Dr. Hamm, and members of the school board. The faculty and staff, along with the members of the Richland Two Calendar Committee, we would like to present the proposed 2014, 2015 school calendar to you. You should have those in your packet. Is that correct? Yes. We believe that the calendar is a balanced calendar. We looked at a Wednesday start, which is a compromise between the five-day start, which is often appealing to the middle and high school, and a two-day start, which is often appealing to elementary, which is myself. appealing to elementary, which is myself. As we did last year, we also compromised with the mid-winter break by offering a four-day weekend in October and February. This calendar is pretty much a mirror image of this year's calendar, and it also complements our neighboring districts of Richland I and Lexington I.
Okay.
Any questions?
Are we ready for questions? Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think you guys have done an excellent job.
For me.
Thank you.
I like it.
So do I.
I really like it. I think this is the first time that I can say in 23 years that our calendar was presented and presented to great satisfaction for me. So on my behalf, I think you guys have done an outstanding job, and I like how you were creative, if you said it was from the same from last year.
Yes.
But I think this is a very good calendar, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the question, how often are we with the Lexington V district as far as dates for the longer holidays?
Currently, Lexington V has not created a calendar. Several districts are waiting for the State Department to determine what they'll do with standardized testing and when they will do that. For example, Richland I has not actually created a calendar. However, they can tell us certain aspects of their calendar in regards to when they'll begin school, when their winter break will be, and when their spring break will be. So at the moment, we don't know.
Other questions? Any questions?
Something not necessarily for, especially, but for, aesthetically, I was in the arthodontist today, and aesthetically, they have all the district calendars posted. Aesthetically, I always looked the weakest, and it looked very unattractive. It was just on a plain eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. Richland I had that beautiful logo, had it laid out, looked like in a calendar format like that. I was just like, it was a bulleted list. So just aesthetically, let's just sort of make it look a little more appealing. So for me, that's a minor thing, but I think that goes, again, that goes to you, not the calendar committee, to you. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Good observation.
Okay, this will be, this will be for action at the next board meeting. I appreciate, why don't, what is the advantage for high school or middle school for starting on Monday versus, I mean, colleges and universities don't do that, so I mean, I'm just trying to figure.
Well, they feel as though they can get, you know, a full week out of the five-day start, and elementary teachers feel that it's too stressful on them.
They just want to give up those two days. I mean, then we're starting and going.
Absolutely right. They feel like every, every day counts, you know, when they're dealing with their, and of course, testing.
We're not giving them less days, so.
Right, no, no, but, you know, that is how they look.
Actually, now that we're talking about every day counts, in the future, is there a way, not this year, I think the calendar looks great, but can we, is there a way we can do away with half-days?
Well, I think that's something that would have to be addressed with academics, as they, they are the ones that really set those half-days. You'll notice they're not on, on the calendar, so, you know, we really don't know what.
I've just, as a parent, you know, dealing with getting your child to school, immediately turning around and going to pick them up, dealing with work, half-day might as well be a whole day. And I know we do teacher development those days, but it seems like we could shift it to do teacher development on whole days as opposed to half-days and maybe be just as effective. It's just something to look at. I don't know if the rest of the board would agree with that or not, but I know I have a lot of parents that, you know, the half-day is difficult.
Well, and, and I do think one point might be that, you know, a half-day is considered a day of school for, for those students, and that does help us achieve that 180.
Eleven thirty, as long as they stay until eleven thirty.
And receive, I believe, receive.
Well, but I think that's meeting a minimum, right? So are we giving the minimum education, are we giving the best education? And if we can have students for the whole day, I think that's a better opportunity, in my opinion, better opportunity for them to, to be there for the day than to be in and then right back out the door again in a short period of time where teachers are squeezing lessons and that's, it's just my opinion and thought. But this, I like the calendar this year, so.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, we will vote on it at our next meeting. Thank you. Agenda for December 10th, which will, we just have one meeting this month, we don't have, because of Thanksgiving week. I remember we used to meet on, you remember we used to meet on that week?
The Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
Yeah.
Yes, and I brought it up that people who have to travel would stay late for board meetings and then leave Wednesday and...
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, listen, I'm not calling for it, I'm just saying...
I just wanted to know if you was calling for it to come back.
No, 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 no. Okay, I'm just trying to figure, okay, Dr. Ham, what have you got on for next?
Well, I'll remind the board that on December 10th, Midlands Technical College, their board will be joining us for a dinner and will be attending our board meeting. So we focus part of the agenda around topics of mutual interest. We'll begin with the student focus. We do have approval of the calendar on the agenda, and then a report on college and career readiness initiatives that will include a number of items that are related to work we're doing with things with career and technology education, a partnership that we have with Midlands Tech that will reflect their interests as well as our own. And then I've added the data snapshot question and answer session that we were unable to complete this evening.
Okay. Any other items for future or at this time?
I wanted to, I've brought this up before, but I still want to look at the incentive for those teachers who did summer staff development during the summer without any type of reimbursement as far as gas mileage or even childcare. And then once again, I'm going to ask for us to look and see, can we find some funding for those teachers? I think it's very important to show our teachers how much we appreciate them going beyond the call of duty to do staff development on their own during the summer without any type of reimbursement. So I, I'm asking again that we find some kind of money. I'm not saying give them a full pay, full days paid, but I want them to have some type of stipend so that in the future, they will continue to be energetic, energized, to, to want to learn and get together during the summer to better help our students, to improve our test grades, as the lady mentioned tonight. Also, I want to know, I, the difference in pupil, Darlington's pupil amount versus Lexington and ours, because I've heard before that their grades are much better and they get less per pupil funding. So I'd like to know if you can get that for me?
Spending per pupil.
Right, stated per pupil.
Darlington and?
She mentioned Darlington, Lexington, and then what is ours? If they're doing, if they're getting, I want to know how much less are they doing a better job than what we're getting? We're getting more money, but less results, so I want to see what the difference is there. Thank you.
Other items for future boards?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to know if we could add some time to talk about domestic violence and also about sending some of our staff to the training.
Domestic violence?
Oh, I can back her up on that. Let me speak on that, Mr. Chairman. Mia Butler held a town hall meeting on domestic violence a few weeks ago at Ridgeview, and we have a trained person at Blythewood High, Blythewood Academy who used to work with domestic violence. And out of that meeting, it came up so many people right here in our district spoke, even a legislator spoke, not a legislator, county council, elected official, on being abused. And so many, not just women are being abused now, a lot of men are being abused also. And so we think that during that panel, there were several people on the panel, she can probably remember the names, but it was brought up that a lot of this could be caught within the schools if we have people trained to identify these abusers or people who are being abused. I think that's the correct way to say it, it is not. So there is some funding out there for us to send people in our district, and we wanted to ask about getting some people trained so that they can identify these people who are victims of such severe domestic violence.
Anderson, can I piggyback on that request? I think one of the other things, because I was at that session as well, that came up was for school districts and employers to review their work policies as well and find ways where, that there can be some policies done and ways to sort of help those who may be going through domestic violence. I don't have specific answers on that, but I would like to have us begin to look at that to see where we can maybe tweak policies that may be helpful for those that are going through those issues.
That was a very interesting form.
It's a prevalent problem. It's very prevalent.
And to hear some of the cases, just really open your eyes that we need to be catching a lot of this within our schools.
Some grant stuff out there, maybe we can look towards that.
And I think they did, didn't they say there was grant money out there?
Yes.
That's where we need to start, I believe. Thank you for the report, items, future. At this time, I'll turn to the second public participation. Is there anyone at this time who would like to address the board? Raise your hand and come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to board superintendent comments. I'm going to go from my left, Ms. Brill, I'm going to go that way. Okay, start.
Well, since we don't meet again until December, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Seems like it's not time to think about turkeys, but we do. And since I love turkey and all the fixings, look forward to it, and it's a great time to share with family and relatives and neighbors. And also want to say I deeply appreciate the work that Lottie Chisholm and Cleveland Smith have done. We had a record number of appeals and expulsions tonight, and they worked diligently getting all those heard, getting all that information to us, and I am deeply appreciative.
What's up, Ms. Ross?
Yes, I had the opportunity today to go visit Blythewood Academy as well as Killian, and I was quite impressed with what I saw in the classrooms and with the faculty and staff.
Ms. James?
Debbie, I want to, Dr. Ham, welcome you again as our full-time superintendent. I'm very excited about the next year and a half, where we go with you at the helm, so that's exciting. I want to send a message to those students who are in our schools and causing safety issues for our other students. If you're involved in gangs or you're involved in threatening our other students, then we're not going to tolerate that. And we had part of our issues tonight, and so I applaud the schools for handling those issues. We want to make sure that everybody in our schools is, are safe and can do what they need to do to learn. And want to wish all the veterans, thank you for your service. We just had Veterans Day, certainly a big issue in our district. And for those of you who supported the library referendum, it did pass. So I think it was because I said something at every board meeting up until the referendum came to bear, but I'm very excited to see the library referendum pass and see what comes out of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to congratulate those students who were recipients for the Lions Club Peace Poster Project that started at 4:30 this afternoon. It was a very exciting project, and it's fly you're here with the little children, middle schoolers artwork, so I just thought that was very precious. So congratulations to each of those people. Congratulations to all of our recipients today who won or received awards. Also, I want to say on our agenda item briefing, the Richland II Board Snapshot, that this fall, Richland II is inviting staff to participate in the district's Poverty and Diversity Awareness Seminars series, ending, entitled Facing Our Data, Defined in Our Future. And I think that is very necessary in today's society, because since we are such a multicultural district, I think that that is very necessary. And I'll look at the dates to see if there's time on my calendar that would permit me to attend that. Also, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to all. Please keep in mind the needy and the homeless. If you have overflow food, just drive down to one of the shelters or wherever and drop off some food, because you know, a lot of our children, the last meals they may receive is the one that they receive during their school hours. Also, Dr. Ham, congratulations to you again, and I wish you the very best during your next 18 years, say 18 months. 18 months, and I am very glad that your husband has recuperated very well. Thank you.
Inspector.
I just want to also say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Travel safe and congratulations again, Dr. Ham.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About 16 months ago, I made a statement at one of our board meetings and said that we needed to focus like a laser on what's really important in this district and that student achievement. And I say that again tonight. We still need to continue to focus like a laser on that. We need to increase our efforts in early childhood education significantly. We need to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our transient students. We need to pay particular attention to, I looked at one set of numbers in the, in the data snapshot that you gave me, Jeff, that showed a tremendous increase in rise in the number of students for whom English is their second language, and trying to make sure we bridge that gap and the barrier that exists there. And so I challenge us to accept the challenge of moving forward and aggressively addressing the critical issues that affect the success of all our students. Those students who started here and those who just came here, it really doesn't matter, they're our students now. Bullying is a real issue. Bullying is a very real issue. We must be deliberate in our efforts to ensure that all of our students feel safe, and any conduct that jeopardizes their safety is absolutely not tolerated. As I said, the work about, ahead of us is very critical to the success of our students, and that's why I'm very pleased that the board made the decision to promote Dr. Ham and now given her the opportunity and the responsibility of addressing some of these very real issues that deal with the success of our students. And so thank you, Dr. Ham, for accepting that challenge. I look forward to working even more closely with you as we collectively try to address the issues that will ensure that our school district continues to grow and be successful. Mr. Chairman, you've had a very difficult month or so in dealing with a lot of challenges, and I want to applaud you for how you have handled them as well and how you've conducted the board meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jackson? Dr. Ham?
Ms. Anderson already mentioned the annual Lions Club Peace Poster Contest that took place this evening. The artwork was really remarkable. I was proud of our students. But I also want to mention that we've had this partnership with the Lions Club for 17 years, which I think is just a wonderful partnership with them. Dr. Karen Cooper-Haver, who we know as the coordinator of Family Service, Family Intervention Services, recently won the Crystal Star Award, which is a competitive honor for those who have made significant contributions to the advancement of dropout prevention and recovery programs. So congratulations to Dr. Cooper-Haver. Kelly Mill Middle Schools Inc. program had teams that finished first, second and third place in a statewide fall finance challenge, and there were more than 100 teams and they placed first, second and third, which is just a remarkable accomplishment, and all the kids that were on those winning teams won cash prizes, which was also nice for them. Also at Kelly Mill, we're proud that they were revalidated as an avid national demonstration school. They were the first one to receive that distinction in the state, and that means that school districts throughout the country who are interested in implementing avid or improving their avid programs will be visiting Kelly Mill as a model site. We have three high school football teams that made it to the playoffs, so congratulations to Westwood, Spring Valley that remains undefeated, and Blythewood High School. Spring Valley High School coach Miles Audridge was named the Palmetto Champions All-State All-Star Coach of the Year. Coach of the Year. And I, you might have noticed on the program, on, on the data snapshot that I'm walking around in my pajamas in one of those photos, Jeff could take that picture off of the, the cover, but I am proud to say that we met our United Way goal, and that was just a few weeks after raising over $50,000 for Walk for Life, and says a whole lot about the heart of the people that we work with here in Richland Two. Last but not least, I want to talk about Veterans Day. I don't know if any of you got a chance to visit schools on Veterans Day, but we had remarkable programs going on throughout our schools. We had a wonderful field study, a visit to the Veterans Day parade with the students who are in our child development programs. They were there with their hats and their flags. And I think that we're doing a wonderful job of helping our students really appreciate the contributions that these individuals have made to our country. And we wanted to share a few pictures of Veteran Day celebrations that took place around the district.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. It's hard to follow that. My dad, who is 92, went to the, his great-granddaughter invited him to the Veterans Day celebration at Center for Knowledge. So, he went over there Monday and participated in that. He's sharp as a tack. He can't walk real good, but he's, he's real, he's real sharp. He was telling me about it and how much he enjoyed it and what it meant to him for our district to honor him in that way. And so, we're just, we've got, we've got a lot to be proud of. I mean, we've got a lot of issues here. There's no, every school district does. But I'm, I'm with Ms. Jackson. We've got a laser focus on achievement and safety. I think they're going hand in hand. The more I'm seeing here in the last six months to a year, it gets going hand in hand. And I want to know the issues in the schools personally from principals and administrators about, do our kids feel safe? I mean, and I know we're going to always have somebody who doesn't feel safe. Don't get me wrong, I understand that, but I'm just saying, are they safe, I guess? Is, are they safe? Should they feel safe? I, I want to know that. And will they walk down the hall without repercussions and definitely ride a bus the same way. But, Dr. Ham, I want to congratulate you on becoming superintendent of Richland Two. You're actually the third superintendent I've worked under, and I, and I feel honored that, that you're here. And thank you for your service before, and I look forward to your continued service as superintendent.
Thank you.
Go here, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Mr. Manny. Vote if you.
Do you have to vote?
It'd be nice. Does everybody log off?
Yes.
I'm on.
Okay, adjourned. We'll see, we'll deal with this. Thank you.